It is seven o'clock on November fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen. I'd like to call the College Place City Council meeting to order. Mr. Cleveland, would you say our prayer and lead our pledge of allegiance?
Certainly. Dear Lord, we ask that you watch over our city, bless its inhabitants, and be with us during our meeting. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's now time for our public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address.
Can I ask a question? I have a comment to make on something that's on the agenda. Is this the time or at the time it's on the agenda?
It would be more appropriate on the agenda. That way, there's context involved in it all. Before us is our consent agenda, approving this evening's agenda, approving the council minutes from October twenty-fourth, approving council workshop minutes from the second and the ninth of November, surplusing three sixteen Southeast Second, surplusing equipment, confirming youth advisory commission appointments, contracting our city's insurance association of Washington Insurance Policy and Premium, our check register and financial for September, and approving the consent agenda items, excusing council member Sherman and Peterson.
And Peterson.
Yeah, if there was an addition. Ms. Selby?
I move we approve consent agenda items two point zero one through two point zero nine and excuse council member Sherman and Peterson.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Before us, we have Mr. Brian Duval, who is the Walla Walla Valley Chamber of Commerce Executive Director. Mr. Duval, welcome to the valley and thank you for coming and presenting to our city council.
Thank you very much for having me.
And welcome to your wife as well.
Yes.
It's good to have her here finally. So I was asked to give you just a brief update on what the Walla Walla Valley Chamber of Commerce is doing. When I was hired back in July, I was given a few mandates by my board of directors. One of them was to strengthen our relationships with our local governments and the business community as well as with some of the other nonprofit organizations that we work closely with, including the Wine Alliance, the Downtown Foundation, the Visit Walla Walla, and so on. Another one was to improve service to all of our communities in the greater Walla Walla Valley. So I want to share with you a little bit about what the chamber has done already, just since I've been here, but the overall direction of where we're going for 2018. So back in early October, we partnered with College Place High School to introduce the business community to their P-57 Dream Lab, the Dream Studio program that they have over there, and had a decent turnout. It was a first attempt, so there were about twenty or so businesses, business people who turned up to that event, got a tour, and had an opportunity to hear from the students. Everyone was extremely impressed with our new people. And then they had an opportunity to see them working with the amazing equipment that's available and see some projects that were actual business-related projects and get an understanding of the process, the thinking process, that they're being taught, which is the one that was developed by Stanford. So I think we've made a really good first impression with those who attended, resulting in some business relationships with some of those students in terms of internships and potential job shadowing. We definitely will be working with Heidi and Kirk Jamison, the other folks over there, to broaden that program and strengthen it. This fits in line with our overall direction of our chamber. Now, for two hundred-plus years, chambers of commerce have been known as tourism and small business development for most communities. But in the last, say, fifty years or so, as funding for those efforts became serious, they were either spun off and became their own independent organizations, forming their own convention visitor bureaus or institutions like Visit Walla Walla, or they were brought in-house to the local government, usually under economic development offices. So most small chambers were left feeling like, okay, what do we do? How do we remain relevant and serve our community? Our focus to address some of those issues here in our area is we're going to focus more on small business development. So instead of competing with Visit Walla Walla and the Wine Alliance and Downtown Foundation for LTAC funds, we instead wrote a letter of support for Visit Walla Walla and encouraged continued funding at previous year's levels. And they have then agreed to contract us to maintain our visitor center lobby and staff time answering questions from the web, from emails, from phone calls, and walk-in visitors who will come to us because of all those many decades of branding that we are a visitor center. We'll never overcome that. So we will continue to provide basic tourist visitor information, but our focus is going to be on small business development. So we have agreed to become the fiscal agent for the Small Business Development Center. So Joe Jacobs will no longer be located out in the airport terminal by himself. He will be moving in on December eleventh to the chamber building. We've got an office space available for him there, and we will be providing staff support, answering the phone questions, that sort of thing, and scheduling appointments because he spends a lot of time out of the office. And without his staff support, it looks like the office is always closed over there at the terminal. And so there's been a level of frustration for small businesses trying to get appointments with him. We're going to solve that problem. So we're very excited to announce that, as I said, December eleventh he'll be moving in, with a remake happening early January with the official announcement to the public. So our focus is going to be on small business development. We want to follow a pipeline, if you will, the same process that the port used along with the college system to launch the growth of the wine industry. So you had a college that was producing students and small business people who were coming out wanting to launch wine-related businesses. And as a result, over the last number of years, the wine industry has grown and has greatly impacted our economy. Okay, so that's a business model that worked. At the port, they had a demand for space, incubator space, and so because they had tenants lined up and waiting, they were able to justify grant funding and so forth to go ahead and build facilities for that. We want to follow that business model and work with the business communities throughout our area to find out, okay, one of the questions I asked was, why isn't there an incubator for businesses not related to wine? And so there was a number of folks around here who want to start other kinds of businesses, but they don't have the space, they don't have a place that can support them and have economies of scale, have shared resources. And so we're working with Ann Nelson over the Commerce Department, as well as a bunch of folks here in the area who have a very intense interest in creating this small business incubator slash maker space slash accelerator. And so we're going to be involved in that, working primarily with the youth, all the way up through the college, with the idea that you don't have to go away to college or you don't have to go away to a career. There is a Plan C, and that could be start and grow your own small business right here. And hopefully we can retain talent as well as diversify our economy so that it's not so heavily retail-based.
Questions for Mr. Duval. Ms. Nyhanigan.
If I can say this word.
Entrepreneur?
Entrepreneurship. And what are you kind of leaning toward with the youth? What are you thinking about?
Well, we work with folks like Junior Achievement and the public school systems on basic understanding of business and the idea that if you see a problem in the community, if you can figure out a creative way to solve it, that it could become a viable business. We realize that we don't have the resources as a nonprofit organization to deal with multimillion-dollar economic development projects. But we can work with small businesses and the community to grow grassroots-level, small businesses that have one to five employees. So you have to start out with a sole proprietorship, and as they grow and scale their business, add one or two other folks, grow a little bit at a time. You get ten of those businesses like that growing, and you've added forty new jobs over a course of like a five-year period. That's a significant impact, and that's something that we can actually.
It's good with the youth too, because we need to get our youth involved. That's good. Thank you.
Mr. Dickerson?
I know you have expenditures. What's the source of your funding?
We are entirely funded by the donations of our members. So we sell, there's sponsorships of our events. We have four events, golf tournament, but our big one is either our annual awards banquet, which is going to happen on December sixth, where we recognize community leaders. But we also have a business awards banquet in September, and then we have our business summit, which will be in April of 2018. And we're going to make that the cornerstone event for this year.
You say members. What's the membership?
Active members, around four hundred and fifty to five hundred. Depending on the time of year, we can be as high as six hundred members. So membership dues make up approximately fifty percent of our budget, and the other is through events and non-dude revenue.
And if I remember right, you have an office right downtown. Is that still?
Right, we're on Twenty-Nine East Sumat. And our service area is the entire Walla Walla Valley. So it includes North Fairwater. We'll be working with everybody in the area.
Good, sounds good.
Thank you. I appreciate your opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Duval. Pleasure for having you here.
We'll be in your Christmas parade as well. Looking forward to it.
So, urban growth boundary adjustment recommendation, Mr. Dorn, Mr. Ricard?
Yes, we have Greg Dorn, our consultant for the comp plans here tonight. He's going to go over the work that we've been doing since the kickoff meeting, primarily focusing on our urban growth expansion and the applications that we need to make to the county that are due November thirtieth, the end of this month. So I'll go ahead and, Greg, take it from here.
Mayor, members of the city council, let's get to the record, my name is Greg Dorn. And I'd like to say right at the outset that the map I have here next to me is exactly as the same as the map up there and the one that may be in front of you on your computer. So hopefully between the three, all of us in the room can see and refer to the same document. But as you know, we've started a process to review and update the city's comprehensive plan and development regulations. But there is, as John said, an action that needs to occur before we complete the review and update so that we can keep the discussion going and keep the options that are available to the city as we proceed open, because it's an action that involves the county, who is also in the process of updating their comprehensive plan. You may recall from previous discussions that a part of the comprehensive planning effort includes not only consideration of the land inside the city limits, but also an area outside the city limits that would be a logical area for city services to be extended into the future and when property owners are ready to be potentially annexed into the city into the future. And that area is referred to in the planning circles as an urban growth area. And so you have, for any of the cities and counties that are planning under the requirements of the Growth Management Act, we have our city limits, and then an area around the city that the city and the county jointly, in consultation with affected property owners, acknowledge and recognize that this is an area that is logical for the city to plan and extend services and would be logical to grow into the future. And the future is at least twenty years out in terms of our thinking. Now, you have an area inside the city limits that was a part of your urban growth area, and today it is a part of your city limits. So you have a recent example of that, and John has identified it right there on the map. And that was a major portion of the urban growth area. It is now a part of the city, and planning is occurring with the property owners to come up with a specific development proposal about how development would occur in that area, and so to make sure that the city has the opportunity to complete the planning and say, this is how we'll provide the services to serve the area. With that annexation, the city had only one other significant area within its urban growth area, an area for future growth and development, and that's the area that John's highlighting on the map. And it's the area that includes and is immediately surrounding the Martin Airfield. Now, in the previous planning, that area was identified as an area suitable for industrial development. And industrial development is important in any community because it provides only jobs, but the tax base is necessary to provide the services to serve the residential areas in the community. And so in looking at the map, you see an area that was a future addition to the city, an urban growth area that had been designated for industrial development. That was good. The practical reality is, and the experience over the past several years, is although it looked good on the map, in reality, it really had limited development potential as an industrial area. Why? First of all, the airfield is there, and in order to maintain air operations, you have to have safety zones and areas where no development occurs, and then other areas where very limited development occurs, low heights, not very intensive activities. So as a project manager, quite a bit of the area is really dedicated to airport operations and isn't suitable for industrial development at all. Then in addition, down in that area, there are some steep slopes. There is a creek and buffers, and there's some areas that are just wet because it's a low-lying area. None of that area is suitable for development. It also happens to be at a low elevation than the city sewage treatment plant, so although it appears on the map to be close by, it actually has to go uphill. And you may recall, it doesn't naturally do that, and so that requires pumping and costs associated with that. But perhaps the biggest limiting factor is, is that site is not close to the major transportation corridors. And if there were activities that either generated a lot of truck traffic, which is common for industrial areas, or a lot of employees going to and from work, that would require, in all likelihood, significant improvements to the roadway that goes right along the perimeter of the college campus. And so to have, to have to make significant improvements to an area where development is already largely set and the roadway is pretty well established, to be able to widen that area would be a pretty significant investment and somewhat of a disruptive activity. So it's a long way of saying, it looks great on the map as an industrial area, but it's likely to be on the map for a long time as a potential industrial area because it just doesn't have the attributes that lend itself to development. So those are the kind of issues that get addressed during the updated comprehensive plan. And as we were looking at the map and talking with the property owner who's interested in maintaining the operation of the airfield, we said, if not there, then where? And part of that, the answer to that question is, where do businesses and industries look to locate? And the answer is, along transportation corridors where city services and, like sewer and water, are readily available, is one, or two, where there's a amount of land suitable for development. So those are key factors that affect where businesses look to locate. And so as we continued, one of the areas that drew our attention was the area to the southeast, right there. Because it's on the State Route one twenty-five corridor, the transportation network is already there and in place, there is going to be a new city well down in that area. So we would have improved water service. Sewer is already available to the area. And so it started to check a number of the criteria that would lend itself to that. And although an argument that could be made that you can never have too much industrial land, one of the things, as we go through the growth management processes, we have to be able to demonstrate that there is a need for additional land, but the law provides that you can change or move from one to the other without increasing the overall total. So those pieces came together, and we said, what if we took the areas around the airport and airfield that aren't suitable for industrial development and applied them somewhere else, like down in the southeast area along the State Route one twenty-five corridor? So that was the focus of our discussion. We had an opportunity to meet with some property owners down in the area. We discussed the matter with the planning commission, and so we're now bringing it to you tonight, and it's on your agenda as an action item, because in order to reallocate or adjust urban growth area boundaries, it has to be approved by the city and it has to be approved by the county. And the city actually has to make application to the county. The county reviews the application. If the county concurs, then the city can incorporate it in the comprehensive plan that we go through and we complete the planning process. So that's why we have this agenda item. So we've kind of spelled out the kind of the steps or the process. The area in the red is the area that would propose to come out of the urban growth area and propose that it receive a special zoning designation under the county zoning, similar but different than the special zoning that's around the regional airport. It would talk about the importance of maintaining the airfield operations and preserving and protecting the airfield and supporting future development, but development is compatible with the airport. Then there is a corner, a little green corner. That area, which is owned by the same family that owns the airfield, is actually on a bench up above. And it really is land that is not associated with the operation of the airfield. And in talking with the property owner, they would like to retain the ability to have urban levels of residential development in that bench area, the area up above, and there's a way to access it from the property just to the east, which is being developed now. So it made sense to keep that little portion in the urban growth area, but take the airport out of the urban growth area and then reallocate it to the southeast corner, if you will. And in talking with the property owners, there's three different areas over there. There is the area right along one twenty-five, which would be most suitable for commercial development in the future. There is the area that is set back, that is up on the bluff above, in the vicinity of Yellow Hawk, that would be suitable for residential development. And there is a little strip right here, there's actually a hill that kind of goes up and over and down, but there's a little strip that visually and physically is an extension of this area right here. So red for green, industrial for residential, commercial and residential. Now, you might ask, what about industrial? And we looked at a number of potential industrial sites in this area, and this is going to be a little bit maybe more detail than you'd like to hear about the Growth Management Act tonight. But one of the things that the county has an obligation when they're doing their planning is to protect agricultural lands. And in Walla Walla County, there's a lot to protect. That's the good news. All of the green areas on this map are agricultural lands that, according to the county comprehensive plan, should be protected. And if you look at that and you look where the city of College Places and you look where the city of Walla Walla is, you see that there isn't much room for either city to grow in the future. So basically, both cities are boxed in. And we had identified some potential sites for industrial development, but they were in areas that are designated for agriculture right now. And that would have put and raised the question of bumping up against the county's comprehensive plan. So we had a number of conversations at the staff level with the county and decided that instead of putting the county in an awkward position or the city in an awkward position right now, let's sit down with the county and the city and take some time. It might take a year, it might take two years, but let's figure out a long-range solution so that College Place can grow in the future and know where and how it's going to grow, particularly for commercial industrial development, the same for Walla Walla, and do it in a way that the county can meet its requirements and mandates to protect agricultural land. So we're going to have some ongoing discussions, and it may take a year or two before we come back, but at some point in time, we're going to come back and say, we found what we think is a long-range solution that would work for College Place, Walla Walla, and the county. And just for good measure, we'll include the Port District in the discussions because they're really in the business of promoting industrial development. So in answer to the question, why isn't there any industrial area on the map, it's because we recognize it's going to take some more time, but these other pieces are areas that appear to be ready to go, and so let's accomplish that and take the more time, and we'll come back and deal with the industrial as we proceed. And so that's kind of the two steps. And you can see that two hundred and sixteen acres would come out, a hundred and fifty-seven would come back in. So the city arguably has about fifty-some acres that we could quote-unquote bank or put in urban reserve to hold for that outcome of that discussion with the county of how to solve the problem on a long-range basis. So that's the framework. There's one other item. School district, as they're thinking about the future and potential ways of meeting their future needs, is that the law requires that school facilities that are going to serve urban populations be in urban growth areas, be in city limits. There's a recent change in the law that says, but you can't always do that, and if you can't, here's another way of accomplishing it. But in conversations with the school district, we said, since we're going to be making amendments to the, or proposing amendments to city's urban growth area, if it would be helpful, then let's include an area so the school district has the ability to grow if and when they're ready to. The good news is that it would be helpful in support of the school district. The bad news is, it may be a bit premature to do that right now. And we're having more discussions with the school district. So part of the discussion that, as you take the motion later tonight, it would be appropriate, if you're so inclined, to authorize us to proceed with the three changes, recognizing that depending on discussions, particularly with the school district, the school district one may drop out because it's just not ready. But we still proceed the discussions to make sure that we've done everything we can to be helpful in support of the school district. So that's a pretty long-winded introduction. We can certainly elaborate probably far more than you would ever want to hear about the Growth Management Act and how it applies to situations like this. But at the end of the day, the notion is, the areas in the green are more suitable for development and are more suitable for being served by city services and for long-range planning purposes would arguably better serve the interests of the city. And the red area can continue to be preserved as an airfield, continue to be an asset for the community, but not put the city in the position of having to figure out how to provide services or how to make road improvements that could go through the university that would adversely affect the university and adversely affect the neighborhood to support an area that really isn't suitable for industrial development. So I think I've kind of said more than I should at this point, and I'll stop and answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Dorn. Ms. Selby?
In the report that we got, it said that you met with the property.
In the report that we got, it said that you met with the property owners, but it didn't really say what kind of feedback you got from them. Are they most in favor, most opposed?
There are several, and John can add into this, there are several property owners that are particularly interested and are advocating because they're the ones that have development plans that are most ready. There are some that have said, you know, they'd like to keep the option open, but they aren't ready. And there are some that have said, we still need to kind of think through this to make sure we understand. And so the questions have been like, if we're in the urban growth area, do we have to annex? And the answer is no, you can, but you don't have to. So we've been getting questions. And so, John, is there anything you want to add in terms of the feedback?
I think it was a mix of, you know, people were getting educated on the process of what this urban growth means for them, what the potentials are. There were certainly a number of property owners, the Arbenies who own this big chunk here, have already provided me with an email that they want to be included in the urban growth area. The Hare Brothers and John Daven, who are a partnership with the Soaring Hawk, they have the, most of this property, they're in favor. I think we might have this property owner interested. She's kind of on the fence. It was an understanding process. But let's remember that this is a, that we still have to go through a public process with the county. That's, they will hold the hearings on these applications, but we have to start from somewhere.
Mr. Dickerson.
Well, you know, first of all, if you've been on the council area long enough, it's amazing to watch the change, you know, in direction. And at one point, we were told with all seriousness that our future was out west. And we came pretty close to even drilling a well on the hill out there and building a tank for our second water kind of supply. And so that's, that's kind of interesting, the now shift industrial to the highway. Would you think commercial is more appropriate along the highway than industrial? Or how would that work?
I think there are, certainly commerce looks for highways. They look for high-visibility areas, areas that are readily accessible. But those are the same characteristics and traits that industries and business parks look for. You know, employees to be able to get in and out, customers to be able to get in and out, shipments to be able to get in and out. So they have many of the same attributes.
Yeah, I think.
Well, it's a contract. It's part of the contract.
Placement of buildings.
I knew that we had said it, but I didn't know everything.
And all kinds of really things to residential.
And when we say business and or industry, oftentimes now that means things like business parks, campus-type environments, technology. So, you know, sometimes they can buy, involve kind of more traditional kind of industries, but a technology center for something would look more like a business park, but it technically is an industrial site. So those would be some of the things that in the zoning would have to be worked out to ensure that there's compatibility.
Okay, two other points. Thank you. When the red zone came in, that was kind of at the interest and request, I think, of the Keen, Kenny's, is that their name?
Chaney's.
Chaney.
Yeah.
Okay. And so I know they've probably been talking to you over the last couple of years and trying to communicate and so forth and get things straight in their minds, what's going on, what the future is. So how do they feel about this being taken out of the?
Yeah. Well, as we talked to that area, Pete, the little green corner, they said, well, we really envisioned that being residential development and urban densities. So that's why that was.
The rest of it makes sense.
Yeah. So, you know, as they said, you know, this area over here is wet. We've got, you know, problems with that. We know we can't build here. There are kind of a sliver of active area along the Whitman Drive where there could be some developments, as long as it's low-rise, it might be things like mini storages and things like that. So we've been working with them on the zoning, or actually for the county, but the county said we could use some help here. So we've been kind of working on zoning that would be consistent with the Chaney's going to develop the vision for the area.
And the last point is, just for the record, you mentioned that there's, in the GMA, there's a protection for agriculture. When Walmart was proposed, that same argument came up, but it never went anywhere. And so I'm just curious how serious of an obstacle that is.
The, one of the interesting things about the Growth Management Act is there's no definitive source or place you can go to say, is this okay? Or is this okay? You have to, you know, consult with others, exercise your best judgment, and then there's a, then you know whether, when there's an appeal or not. And so the county has had some experience with appeals, other counties have, and there have definitely been cases where conversion of agricultural lands or timberlands to other uses has been challenged. And the state has been very consistent in their recommendations to cities and counties, which is, we recommend that you do it on a comprehensive basis and not a, should we change this parcel, yes or no? And we had looked at an area, for instance, just south of the old Milton Highway, where the property owner had expressed an interest, where the port had said, we think that would be an excellent site. And so we were looking at that same way. A pretty good case could be made. The front's on the highway and, and it's flat and the property owner may be interested and the port thinks it's a great site, why not include it? And the answer is, you see, it's right in the green, it's right in agricultural area. And what the state has said is, we encourage you to look comprehensively, not should this site be yes or no. And so we said, well, on that basis, let's step back, let's go talk to the county and let's come up with an overall plan.
And one of the most obvious examples would be the agriculture land right across from the school down on South College Avenue. That was definitely agriculture land that should be protected.
Yeah. Yeah. So there's, that, those are the kind of discussions we'll have. One of the questions we'll ask the county and the farming communities are all ag lands the same. Some are more valuable with others.
So I realize it can be challenged by citizens groups and so forth, and decided in court and so forth. But the first and real obstacle would be the county, if they didn't go along the proportion.
Yep. And so we said, let's sit down with the county then and see if we come up with common agreement. And our sense is that the city of Walla Walla may have some similar interests, maybe in different directions. But if you look, you see a lot of green around the two cities. And so unless somebody's willing to say, the cities aren't going to grow anymore and will provide tax, you know, support so the cities can continue to provide services over time without growing your commercial industrial base, assuming that's not going to happen, we've got to find a solution.
I'm a little puzzled because you mentioned something about the school might change the requests that we're making for the applications today. But I'm looking at the applications and I'm not sure what would change. Because we're asking to delete that area and add the?
And this one is separate from the add and subtract. This, this number three, that's what we have it kind of below the line here, is a separate item. And the school district might just not be ready for that. We always, you know, ask, what can we do to be helpful and supportive? But.
Oh, I assumed that was more for the sewage treatment plant, in case we needed more space.
So.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Dorn? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Well, then, if they want. So moving on to action items. Action item 5.01, Urban Growth Boundary Adjustment and Recommendations. Questions for Mr. Dorn and Mr. Ricard?
Well, my question was, was there anybody here that wanted to comment on this?
Well, is there anyone who wishes to comment on this?
I would think that this would be a huge issue.
Well, I think the planning, the planning commission meeting as well.
The planning commission discussed this. We did have a meeting with property owners in the area. And what this does is authorizes the submission of the application. When the county gets it, then the county will have a public process. There'll be another opportunity to receive, you know, for people to comment.
Mr. Rizzatello.
And I just want to add as well, the planning commission, even the meeting with the property owners, the audio, that's actually on the city YouTube page, so.
Yeah. So we had, to be clear, we had, we had a meeting, a public meeting with, with the property owners and, and that was, they were provided notice to that. And that was very well attended. And that was the evening before the planning commission meeting. And there wasn't anybody from the public at the planning commission meeting, but.
It's been a few years, but John, remind me, the process, the urban growth boundary line is not subject to request by property owners?
They could make, they're, anybody that's adjacent to our city limits could make their own applications to the county at, when they open it up for urban growth. This is one of those times, they did it, I don't know, four or five years ago, and, you know, we went through that process.
And historically, if somebody, if the city wanted to take an area in and the property owners didn't want it, we obliged?
We have made some modifications in some, in some instances, but generally, I mean, we, we're trying to take a holistic, this is our, you know, 20-year growth projection. So it's, you know, if you have somebody in the middle, it's not like an annexation where we can leave an island, sort of, sort of like that.
So we're not subject to people making their requests? We can just draw the lines?
Well, we're subject to the GMA laws and we can try to draw the lines where we'd like.
Yeah, but I just mean between the two.
Yeah. The logical time for the city to do it is when you, right now, when we're doing the eight-year update.
Yeah, I understand.
And then there's the opportunity for individual property owners to do it in the out years.
That I'm just trying to understand. We can draw the lines regardless of whether property owners want it or not.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
With the approval of the county.
Other questions for Mr. Dorn or Mr. Ricard?
I would make a motion.
We need to read the whole motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
I move that we authorize staff to prepare applications to Walla Walla County for comprehensive plan amendments to the UGA, which includes the removal of Area 1A, 216.24 acres. Change Area 1B to urban residential, that is 17.83 acres. And Area 2A, urban commercial, 48.56 acres. Add Area 2B, urban residential, which is 90.68 acres. Add Area 2C, urban residential, which is 18.8 acres. And add Area 3A, urban public reserve, 48.77 acres.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Dickerson, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Maybe further discussion.
Would we like to modify the end of that motion to allow, allow us to not apply for the 3A if the, if discussions go along with the, with the school district, we decide at a staff level that it's not advisable to apply for that at this time? Maybe.
Is there a friendly amendment?
Yeah, no, I don't mind at all. I, I would like to add your recommendation to that and just write in whatever you'd like and we'll approve it.
Okay.
If it looks good, that becomes the official amendment.
Is there a second? If at least.
I'll continue in second. I thank you for the pay reserving, I really appreciate it. Wait, hang on a second.
Ms. Selby, you need to wait for the.
I have a question about that, actually. Because it seems to me that even if the school isn't quite ready for that, I don't see the harm in having it in our UGA. And if anything, it like gives us some breathing room in our UGA. So if a few years from now, the school doesn't want it and we need some area, we can do the same sort of thing that we did with Martin Field. So I guess I don't, I don't quite understand why if the school's not ready, we, we just should leave it out.
Planned price.
Yeah.
Well.
What?
Planned price.
If it's in the urban growth area, it'll affect the property value.
There's that factor and then also if it stays in the urban growth area and we decide to, and they annex in and it doesn't get built out as a school and we decide it's, maybe it's suitable for urban residential. We haven't gone through that analysis. I mean, I know you're using the thought of the land swap, but our approach of the land swap has been, yes, some of it's going to urban residential, but we're also trying to keep a lot of that acreage in a basket that we can apply for economic development. So another light industrial area or commercial area. So although it might be suitable, maybe in the next 10 years, as we've grown and, and we can justify more rooftops, then that might be the appropriate time to bring it in for that use. If that makes sense.
So would we take this red part out now, we don't lose whatever we don't add back in?
Well, we're, we're going to have a policy in the complaint that specifically talks about the remaining acreage. And we've been in talks with the county about that and it, and they seem on board with basically keeping those eggs in a basket. We, we're, you know, we're still fine-tuning our buildable lands analysis that would, that we have to go through in order to justify actual expansions, which we're not really talking about here. We're talking about moving pieces of the puzzle around. We probably don't have the justification on paper to grow for urban, for, say rooftops.
Residential.
Residential. So, so that's why we really want to keep those in reserves. And maybe we would use some of that in the future for other urban, you know, urban residential areas, but we just don't know at this point.
Okay.
Mr. Dickerson.
Just for the record, I want to get serious. Just repeat the amendment the way you'd like it to be for the 3A public reserve. And then let's get approval from the second.
The amendment that I added was, after the add Area 3A, urban public reserve, 48.77 acres, I wrote, with the option to exclude Area 3A.
Okay.
Is that acceptable?
Second. It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Thank you, Mr. Ricard. This is a very complex thing and you've made it quite easy.
Okay, with this next action item, this is the addition of Chapter 3.03, Department. This was introduced to previous council meeting and it just sets forth processes in which we can debar a company if they fail to meet industry standards or contract provisions. And there's a department investigation. Several cities are doing this to send a message to firms who do shabby workmanship and then because they underbid, they just keep giving the award. So with this, basically, I would be the investigator on this and have six months to do so and then indicate results and put them on notice if they are debarred. That would be for a period of two years. They can appeal it to the hearings examiner. This language is borrowed from cities of Spokane and Bremerton because they've been grappling with this. And just, and just with, I would say, conditions of late with a couple of hangout there city projects, I think it would be good to send a message. So that's. of hangout there, city projects, I think it would be good to send a message. So that's what this is about, so.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello. Mr. Cleveland.
Is two years pretty standard then?
Yeah. I, I, I actually wanted it to go longer, but then I reviewed this code in state of Washington versus where I'm from in the state of Illinois. And I realized we didn't have much of a legacy in that past the two years in this state. So I revised it down to two years. In Illinois, it's 10 years, but, yeah.
That is quite, quite a long time for...
Ms. Selby.
I would like to move that we adopt ordinance number 17-046, authorizing the addition of Chapter 3.03, debarment to the College Place Municipal Code as outlined in Exhibit 10.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Mr. Bobbitt. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Rizzatello, once again, state and federal legislative agenda.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This item, we went over at budget workshop about two weeks ago. And this is just Southern Fourth, what are issues both through the state legislature and the federal legislature through the state. I mean, the main one is timely passage or capital budget and public works trust fund. The item, economic development infrastructure pertaining to water reuse that was revised to include the language about the PCBs, which pertains more to our situation. And frankly, a lot of these items are just very common you see in cities in this area. It's very pressing that we get this adopted because right now, we got the proposals for our lobbyists in concert with the county and the port. And we're gonna be having interviews next week. And we really need to hit the ground running because fiscal year 2018 started in soon. And the top priorities from a project standpoint is naturally the two drinking water wells. That's pretty important. Arterial street improvement, which is fourth and Academy Way, which we've been working a lot on, and C Street. And then dealing with the wastewater treatment plant as that presents itself. But yeah, it's standard, fair. And this just recommends the adoption with the resolution for both the state and federal legislative agenda. And it also recognizes that the city supports Association of Washington City's legislative agenda, which encapsulates a lot of these items.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello.
I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 17-032 in support of 2018 federal and state legislative agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Cleveland, seconded by Ms. Nahay. Again, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Rizzatello, support of City College Place Main Street affiliate community application.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This item is just resolution of support from the city council for application into the Main Street program. So Washington Historic Preservation Trust, they basically supervise a Main Street program. It has two levels, an affiliate community, which has less requirements. And then as the, as organizations grow and coalesce a formal Main Street community. Where I was at in Colfax, we were, we grew into a formal Main Street community. As I've said at previous council meetings, the amount of incentives and business assistance is pretty minimal in this state, but this is something that the state has. And first step is really creating a downtown association. Our economic development commissioners have expressed interest in this. And they really want to become an affiliate community and learn what it's about, see if we can get a downtown group going. And if we can, eventually down the line, we get accepted as a Main Street organization, businesses can actually participate in this Main Street tax credit program. And what that is, is at the end of the year, when they pay the business and occupation taxes to Olympia, instead of it going to Olympia, you log into Department of Revenue website and you can actually direct your business taxes to go to the Main Street organization. And it helps fund activities and stuff in your local community. Even, even businesses that aren't in our city, technically, if they were selling coin, could donate to a downtown association here and help fund activities on our Main Street. One question was asked by the Economic Development Commission as well, why don't we join with the Downtown Walla Walla Foundation? And the statute pertaining to this, you cannot be jointly sharing business and occupation tax for the Main Street tax credits. It's for the communities only. So there has to be a Main Street group for the individual city. So this affiliate community, it's a first step to that fairly minimal time investment, just going to a Main Street conference, which is typically up in Ritzville. And a lot of our neighboring communities are involved in this, Colfax, Walla Walla, Pasco, nearby affiliates, which are trying to become a full-fledged Main Street is Waitsburg, Colville, Kiltas, and Twisp.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello.
I like that idea. I think that's great.
Thanks.
I'd like to make the motion to adopt Resolution Number 17-033, supporting City of College Place application to become a Washington Main Street affiliate community.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Nahay, seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion?
Actually, I do have a question, which is about how long or would you expect it to go from affiliate status to full status, where it could start getting the money?
It's typically about two years. And the exciting thing is in the last legislative session, they actually increased the amount that was available for the tax credits because one of the problems that we ran into in Colfax was that they only have about 1.5 million available statewide up until last year. And on New Year's Day, it was like a mad rush for all the businesses to donate to the downtown associations. And they'd actually run out the tax credits. So they basically doubled the amount available. We'll see what happens this year. Because last year, they were still running pretty high. So we'll, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, that seems pretty well for the whole state.
Yeah, I know. Unfortunately, when some of the programs that really help communities, they don't really fund it to the level they need to, so.
Other questions for Mr. Rizzatello? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Gordon, water right purchase agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, council, we bring before you a water agreement for your consideration. It's a culmination of about 10 minutes of work, back and forth between parties that have been talking to. I put most information in the agenda bill there, but it brink, if you recall back in February this year, council gave us, gave the Public Works Committee the opportunity to negotiate, outside of the public eye, and then bring that to council. A meeting later actually provided them the authority to close our deal if we're within certain parameters. Well, we've negotiated an agreement, again, for your consideration. It is beyond those parameters. We're coming back to council for you to consider it. It's for 443 acre feet of water. It's a little over 20% of our existing water rights. If you look at our total amount we're able to draw. It's 1,500 gallons per minute, which is substantial. And it's for an amount just shy of 1.5 million dollars. Now, what this does is this will effectively extend our water rights about between 15, depending on how you count it, to 25 years into the future. That's based, again, on residential consumption rates. And if we do see an increase in industrial use, that could change dramatically. Right now, our current water rights probably will take us through to 2050 or 2060. So this is kind of a C-word's falling purchase where we're looking into the future. Unless, of course, we do bring an industrial user on board sooner, and then this will be very, very important for us. The other thing to look at when considering this agreement is the 1,500 gallons per minute. That's a substantial amount of water we would be able to pump. And that saves a lot of money in terms of storage. Because if you can turn a well on, and that produces that amount of water at any one time, means you don't have to dribble it into a tank and build a tank to store it somewhere else. So just bring that before you. Also wanted to kind of give you a little bit of a context in terms of water use for some of the higher water use industries. I mentioned in there that a chip factory, a smaller one, uses just about as much as we do on a regular basis as a city of almost 1,000 people. And the larger chip plants use quite a bit more than we do. So the water issue is not going to go away. It's going to be one that's going to continue to confront us. It's one where water rights are not going to be any cheaper as we go on. Water's not going to become more available. And with that said, even as we do buy water rights, you'd be very concerned and conscious and aware that the water right isn't necessarily the water itself. And so we're also going to have to take measures to be looking at conservation, also measures at supplementing groundwater with whatever resources we can find. So with that said, I'm willing to entertain any questions you might have that might help you make a decision.
Mr. Cleveland.
So you mentioned this is a little bit larger than the original amount that we approved. How will that kind of affect the budget moving forward?
This, we've looked at that, and I believe the budget was for 1.5 million dollars originally because we didn't know for sure the amount. It's, it is some, I didn't calculate the percentage, but the 31.50 would have been 5% over. So we're looking at maybe 10% more, so. Yeah. So it's a little bit higher. The value here again is in the, the rate of withdrawal. And I should mention too that this water right, the negotiations took quite a bit longer than we anticipated, primarily because we were informed initially that there may not be a transfer of water. There's a bunch of, there was quite a bit of extended time going back and forth with the college. And they found a candid decision that yes, it was available. During that time, there was another water right that presented itself about the same amount, a little bit more. We never concluded any negotiations, never really entered any negotiations. The withdrawal amounts were only about a quarter, a little over a quarter of this amount in terms of 1,500 gallons per minute. So that was an opportunity we looked at. Ultimately, the water ice market is pretty volatile. And this looks like ultimately a better solution for us in terms of that. I think we would find that we get the return on the amount of rate withdrawal in the long run.
Mr. Dickerson.
Specifically, what fund or funds is this limited to, to federal expenses?
My understanding is it could be the water fund. That's enterprise fund. It's going to have to fund everything from, and so forth. And it has been budgeted in basically a position here above. If you have questions on, specific questions on funding, you know Sarah's here. Sure she can.
And so we've, we've budgeted for this and...
Yes.
Yeah. I mean...
Mr. Rizzatello, and then Ms. Selby.
And I just want to add something too. We put this in as soon as we could because we were also notified that there's a conglomerate, basically an investment company, a Banks Water Rights, that approached Ralph about this. And he's basically doing us a solid because he realizes it's helping the community. So he approached us and he pretty much said, you either need to make an offer, or I'm gonna start talking with this capital company and it's gonna go. So we're really up against the wall on this, if we want this, but I, yeah.
Ms. Selby.
This has gone through the Public Works Committee. And we looked at, there were actually, as, as we said, there was actually more than one offer that we looked at. And I strongly recommend that this is the one that fits best. It is put into the city, it is in the water funds, not the general fund. And I think we also owe a debt of thanks to both our staff and Mr. Berchi for their patience in getting this worked out. But now that we do have it officially stated from ecology that this water right is transferable, that makes it very valuable. And we need to move quickly or we will not have it. So I would move that we approve the water right purchase as negotiated.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Mr. Bobbitt. Further discussion?
I just want to comment that I think forward thinking is the way to go. And even though we may not need it immediately, an opportunity like this doesn't come along very often. So I'm, I'm pretty amazed.
It's agreed and it's timely, so.
I, I'm just amazed that they would give up. I mean, look at all the property that own and need to irrigate.
That's correct. No, this is a gratuitous, sort of, advance for the, for the city. It's one like, as somebody's mentioned, is one that is being aggressively approached by other parties. So it's, we'll assess if we want to go ahead and move now.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Joe? I would just like to make one last comment about this, which is I think we can all go home tonight feeling very good because we've done something for our youth and for the future of our community. The best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago. That's also the best time to buy water rights. So, but the second best time is today, so.
Thank you. And the staff has worked extremely hard, very diligently at, at working through this. And as you're familiar with the internal workings that we got this far, this best is pretty amazing. Moving right along, Cascade Gas request to relocate a regulating station. Mr. Hartwig, Mr. Rizzatello.
Cascade Gas, as you know, has a regulating station on southeast 12th Street, just east of Larch. That regulating station, the size of it is inadequate to really service our residential population adequately. And they want to upsize it. Several years then, they've been looking for another new location that, there's several qualifications that they, they, and they, one of them was they ran a transmission lane made down the highway to Larch Street. The reason they did that was in anticipation that we might be able to work at something out. And the other reason is because the, the distribution gas made is large enough there and large enough to get up to 12th Street and so forth to adequately distribute their gas to help, help solve their issue. So they came to us and talked about the property at the end of Larch on the south, the north side of the highway. Because that, that's just a good location for them. And since we don't have an intersection there anymore, we have available property. And there won't be an intersection there with the highway at some point in the long-term process. As a matter of fact, they have their way, there will not be one. So what we did is we talked with them and said some of our requirements if we're going to do that. And in the agenda item, we saw some of those requirements. Cascade Gas would end up beating over that property. Can you do the first one, the easier detail? That's what they wanted. So you can see where Larch used to come into the highway. And then that, that section right there is what they would like to have, to be able to put in their new regulating station. That is our property currently. That is close to the same size as the property that is on 12th Street. So it would basically be a trade. We've asked for, in, in relation to that, we've asked that we be able to carve out like a 500 square foot area in there. Because as, if we get this property developed, the commercial property developing, it would be good to have an area for a sign that tells people that, that the businesses that are in that development. And we, we would propose that we could carve out 500 square feet where we could put in foundation for a sign and assign the business good. So that they can do their advertising to let people know what's, what's there in that property. So... So then, what would, now we can go to the other part of the conversation. So right now, the station's right there, in this red line, is a high-pressure gas line, it's a three-inch main, and it's a high-pressure gas line. What we've asked is they dedicate this property to the city, they remove the existing regulating station, and they cut it back to the main, the pipe going into it and out of it, back to the main in the street. And that will clear that property. We've also asked that this high-pressure main would then be decommissioned, evacuated of all gas, and the easement be relinquished and released from all properties, so that that, so there will be no encumbrances on any of the properties there. They've agreed to do that. We've also requested that they would provide us an additional fifteen hundred dollars to help in the process of making this kind of a little way, a little park area. So people riding bikes or walking on 12th Street, they could go in there, and they could have a place to sit or rest, or just take a break.
And could I add, it has a great view.
Yeah, yeah. And what we would.
And the fence will come down?
Well, not all the way, because of that bank there, but the proposal would be on our end, is we'd end up cutting it, make it like four-foot fence, something like that. So we think it's a good deal. It'll help, the idea of that is that it will help the community as a whole, and receive gas, and fulfills the gas companies' need. It serves our purpose, and I think it would make that area on 12th Street a lot nicer looking than it is right now with used cars parked there for sale, or, and all that type of stuff. That'll go away. We'll make a little grassy area, we'll get water into it, and so forth, and I think that could do very well.
Mr. Dickerson?
So the entire red line will be abandoned?
Decommissioned. It won't be removed. It'll be decommissioned and made inert, and then the easement that is contained in it will be vacated.
Oh. So there's no need to remove it?
There's no need to remove it.
Let's see what I heard.
Yeah, there's no reason, it's just inert. That way, if somebody, when the easement's vacated, so if somebody wants to do something on the property, they dig down there, they'll be able to cut it out of the way, and so forth.
Mr. Cleveland?
Question, forgive my ignorance here, but what exactly does, what is the function of a regulating station?
The line going, the red line that's right there is a high-pressure line. And the regulating station drops the pressure down to forty, and so forth, right in that area.
Second part here, what development would happen if we did approve this and they started using the other site? Like, what would be the next few steps that they'd be taking to put in a new one, a new regulating station at the south end of Larch?
They would have to, well, the big part is already done, and that's the six- or eight-inch main that's down the highway to that, to the end of Larch Street. They would end up putting in, tapping into that and putting the line in and putting in the regulating station there, which will look like, you probably, it's hard to notice, but they thought it would be about the same size as the one by Sun Rental in Wal-Walla along the highway, just to the east side of Sun Rental, there's a gas regulating station there. And it'll look similar to what you have on 12th Street, it's only going to be a bigger, not huge, but bigger pipe sizes and valves.
Mr. Dickerson, I'm sorry.
I didn't have a question.
The requirement is also that it would be fenced around and with a site obscuring, so it'd be slanted, or something like that.
Other questions for Mr. Hartwig?
Our anticipation would be bringing back, oh, we've asked them to prepare the legal document and the agreement, and then, once they get that to us, we would bring that to Council for adoption.
Sounds good to me.
Ms. Selby?
Sorry, I just have one more comment, comments last question. I'm just thinking of when they did the big berth and drilling, and they got stuck on an old pipe. When the easement's taken away, will there be a note put on the title that there is a pipe there?
I don't know.
That might be something to ask, because it might be nice.
We could tell them. I mean, yeah.
Just so people know, I mean, that it's been abandoned and inert, but it's there. So if they end up digging it up, they don't panic.
Mr. Dickerson?
So Paul, the pipeline will be abandoned, but not the easement?
No, we're requesting that the easement may be vacated as well, so that that would get full use to the property.
So that would be eliminated from the title?
Which is why my question, because if the easement's gone, you wouldn't necessarily ever know if there had ever been anything there.
We could find out with that.
Yeah. Just a question.
Next time, berthless in town, you don't have to worry, right?
So volunteer firefighter EMT stipends revision. Chief Winter?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm looking at the ordinance, ordinance referred to Exhibit A. So the intent on the revision for the midway we're going to base stipends is we are revising Exhibit A and leaving the ordinance in place. In the revision of Exhibit A, we are going from our current pay system to a points system to give the ability for the volunteer to track for themselves how involved they are, to know how involved they are, and to hopefully incentivize them to help us with our needs. A lot of times, currently, we have multiple calls at the same time, and in our current system, going on a call is somewhere around two dollars or less, just depending on how many calls we have that this month. In this way, we set a budget for the year, we divide that by twelve, and that's the amount of money that's earnable in that month. And the more you participate, and the more you do things, the more points you get from the, of the total, and the more percentage of that fixed amount is that you can earn. How I sold it to my volunteers is, if you think volunteering is your new career, please don't think of it that way. I don't want you to think of this in greed, I want you to think of this in need. I need you to respond, I need you to be trained. You'll notice in the point system that the higher trained they are, the more points they can accumulate, or at a faster rate. That is to help us with our survey and rating, because if they are a firefighter two in survey and rating, I have, I only have to train them ten hours a month, instead of forty hours a month. So that's a big cost savings to us, and it really helps us in our survey and rating. When I told my volunteers about this, I had eight people in my office that night sign up to take the firefighter one test or firefighter two test. And I said, okay, remember, this is for my needs, not for your greed. But it was still exciting to see them excited about feeling valued by our community in a monetary way to help them cover their costs for volunteer. And so I'm presenting this to you tonight to get feedback, if we need to tweak this or change this, so that I can come back to the next council meeting and quickly get this approved, so we can implement it next year. Questions? This is why I like going last. It may sound a little complicated, but the last system was way worse.
I, yeah, that was clear.
So this is just a regular spreadsheet, and some of the trainings, and some of that, times it by whatever, and that is your total? Yes, sir.
I just want to say, I appreciate your efforts to incentivize and, you know, get our volunteers more engaged, and just appreciate your efforts all around. It sounds like this is something that they are interested in, so that sounds like a point for the point system.
Very pointed.
Thank you, Chief Winter.
Absolutely.
Mr. Rizzatello?
So for the informational reports, we have the capital improvement plan, staffing strategy, and then, well, we went over during the last couple of budget workshops with the Budget App. Please review it. In addition to it being on, in this Board Doc website, there is a budget portal. It's been shared on City Social Media page, it's linked on the news feed section, if you scroll, yeah, City 2018 Budget Materials, and scroll, yeah, click on the link and scroll, and you can see a date, and then all the materials by date, that it went through City Council, or was presented to City Council, and then links where you can compare cities, and then little tutorials from AWC. So there's a lot of information shared on there. So that, it's been shared where Citizens and Newsleather, social media, and then this way, but please review it, it has all the information.
Ms. Selby?
I really appreciate the transparency, including all this on the website. I also think it would be helpful, as we talked about at the workshop, that communication was going to be important. If we could actually have a short communication plan that included talking points, because I know, when I get questions about it, I feel like I, nobody wants to listen to me ramble for forty-five minutes on the budget. So like, what are the key takeaways that, so just some talking points would be really helpful.
Actually, with the staffing deficiencies that we outlined in the budget workshops, I asked the department heads to write up a little paragraph with some talking points, and we're assembling a flyer right now that will have all that.
Awesome, thank you.
So that should be up, I would expect, by tomorrow late afternoon-ish, so.
Right, way ahead of me as usual.